Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm here in the stead of Michael Dever, Chair. I'm Vice Chair of Planning Commission, and I wanted to open up our meeting today, June 9th, 2022 with a roll call, please.
Yes, Director Wong. Mayor Boebst.
Here.
Mayor Brennan.
He's here. We saw him.
I know. Mayor Brennan.
Here.
There you go. Councilperson Conwell. Councilperson Conwell.
He will be here momentarily.
Okay, Director Dever. Mayor Discheco. Mayor Gallagher.
Here.
Mayor Orkut.
Here.
Mayor Prosek. Mayor Sellers.
I'm here. Mayor Prosek is here, but when you went to livestream, my screen is blank, so I can't see if I'm muted or unmuted at this point.
I can hear you now.
Thank you. I'm present.
Thank you.
Councilperson Simon.
I'm here.
Two, three, four, five, six. You have a quorum.
Also, Yvonne is here. I just set her up on the Zoom, so she's here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for being here via Zoom. We have minutes before us from April 14th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second, Simon. Okay. Annette, did you get that?
Mayor Boebst was first, Mayor Brennan second.
Perfect. Thank you. So we, at this point, want to welcome any alternates that are on, our new alternates. Are they on the line?
Unfortunately, Director Wong was not able to join us today. I did trade some emails, and unfortunately, she's not able to be here today, but Marka Fields, oh my gosh, forgetting her last name. I think she was maybe going to join us, just a non-voting representative for the city, but I don't see her on the line.
Okay, okay, so I guess we can move into our Mary, Director, into our first resolution, if that makes sense then.
Yeah, and we can first ask if there was any comments submitted from the public.
Public.
None that I see, no.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so we'll move right into our first order of business is Resolution Number 220609A, City of North Olmsted zoning map update request. I will yield the floor to Dan Meany, our Manager of Research and Information Services, to briefly mention this agreement that we are looking for your approval to enter into.
All right. Hi, this is Dan. Yeah, this is a pretty straightforward agreement with City of North Olmsted to prepare a zoning map update for an amount up to $7,000. It should be pretty straightforward, similar to where we recently finished with Middleburg Heights on their zoning map, but there aren't really any changes. We're basically converting their CAD-generated map into GIS format, and we'll be able to post that as an interactive map online.
Wow. And I apologize, I had a typo on there. It's not the next administration, but the new administration, so Mayor Daley Jones, and yeah, so maxed up until they've reached out to us and requested assistance with this matter.
Sure, thanks. And any questions from board members, committee? If there's no question, if it's pretty straightforward, I can entertain a motion to adopt.
Motion so many.
Second. Hold on, who was the second?
All in favor?
Hi.
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 We may need to go back. I think there was multiple people talking.
Who were the first and seconds?
Uh-oh. Sunny made the motion, and I believe there was a second. But I'm not sure.
Was that you?
Mayor Orkut made the motion, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it was all in favor, no opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, resolution passes. We have several items now, and ask Mary, Director Serby, if she could talk first about these different projects.
Yes, thank you. We have a variety of updates for you. None require your approval, but we felt that there's a lot of important projects that have recently been completed or near completion, and it's always good to make sure that you are informed of the work that we are doing as an agency. So we thought we'd provide some updates to you on some of those important projects. So our first one that we've got here is the East Cleveland Parks and Green Space Plan. Presenting today will be Nicole Laird and Laura Mendez Ortiz. So I will turn it over to Nicole and Laura.
Thank you, Mary. I'm Nicole Laird. Me and my colleague Laura Mendez Ortiz and I wanted to present an overview of the East Cleveland Parks and Green Space Plan. Next slide, please. The City of East Cleveland applied for and received an award of planning services to draft a Parks and Green Space Plan. Over the last two decades, the city faced an economic crisis due in part to population loss, the foreclosure crisis, declining home and property values, and an overall decline to the tax base. However, despite these setbacks, the city continued to engage in community and regional partnerships, such as the County Land Bank, to improve the quality of life for residents through neighborhood stabilization and acquisition of a journey of adjoining parcels for development. The city recognized that improved and enhanced parks have the potential to increase home values and become a catalyst for new development, thereby improving the quality of life, which includes physical and mental well-being, access to outdoor recreation, and connected bike trails and pedestrian paths through the neighborhoods and the parks. Next slide, please. Research has shown that parks provide safe and welcoming provide safe and welcoming community spaces for engagement, socialization, and to help foster a sense of community pride. The East Cleveland Parks and Green Spaces Plan outlined a framework to enhance parks and park amenities that can provide space for services and programs, support, and strengthen community efforts to improve overall well-being, promote activity alternatives, well-being, excuse me, and foster an appreciation of the environment that can bolster community engagement opportunities. Next slide, please. In this brief overview of the current conditions for the parks, we found that there is a total of 213 acres of parkland that goes across the seven parks within Cleveland, East Cleveland. That equates to approximately 12.3 acres per 1,000 residents. The Trust for Public Land states that the ideal distance for people to get to a park is about a half a mile or a 10-minute walk. In East Cleveland, that's 90% of residents have access to a park within a 10-minute walk. There are about 2.4 miles of trails in the East Cleveland Park system, but all of those trails are within Forest Hills Park. And there is a great sidewalk network within East Cleveland, with 99% of the streets either having one or two sidewalks. Unfortunately, many of those sidewalks are in need of repair. Next slide, please. Next slide, please.
I'm trying. For some reason, it's not working. Hold on, I'm sorry. There you go.
Thank you. As part of the planning process, we authored a community survey to better understand the wants and needs of the residents. Part of this plan was conducted, was conducted, part of the survey and the plan was conducted during the pandemic. So we had to modify our approach to our public engagement and to try to reach as many of the community members as safely as possible. So early on, we created yard signs and flyers, and we posted those within, we posted those at Forest Hill Park. Those signs and posters had a QR code in order for residents to just, if they're walking through the park, scan the code, and it would take them to our survey. We also posted the survey flyers at City Hall, East Cleveland Public Library, and the Coit Road Farmers Market. However, due to limited access to Wi-Fi for some of the community members, we supplemented that online community survey with a paper form. The Northeast Ohio Alliance for Hope helped us, which is their, which is East Cleveland Community Development Corporation. They helped to facilitate distribution of that online, excuse me, of that paper survey through a citywide mailer. So when the CDC guidelines allowed us to go out into the community last summer and fall, we were able to go out to community-wide events such as Movie Night at Patterson Park, the caravan at Coit, at Coit Road Farmers Market, and we posted activity boards where we, where we asked community members what are the things that they would like to see in East Cleveland Parks. And so we had a picture of different events, and we had dots, and we asked them to place dots in places where they thought a park would need it, or someplace where they wanted this activity. We had over 136 responses to our survey, and we had over 546 total impressions to our, to our online activity boards. And again, those, when we went out to the public, we manned a table, and we had our activity boards where the residents came up to us and talked to us, told us their comments. We also had these activity boards posted in the East Cleveland Public Library and at the Salvation Army. Next slide, please. And as part of the, as part of that community engagement piece, we use those comments that they gave us, comments such as "The parks are a vital part of our community", "The mental benefits of being able to visit green spaces that is well-purposed and intentional for visitation is invaluable", "The parks are an asset to our neighborhood, and we provide an enormous, and will provide an enormous amount of help to the City of East Cleveland". So comments like that from the residents helped us to kind of draft their vision for the parks. That vision includes four themes and eight principles. Those themes and principles are kind of like the guiding force for the recommendations that we, that we will, that we've given to the city. Those four themes are comfort, community connected, and catalyst. And out of those four themes, we have those eight principles that support that theme. So for example, comfort, parks are well-maintained, and parks are welcoming and safe. Next slide, please. So based off of those themes and principles, we came up, we, we have our draft recommending, or excuse me, we have our recommendations. Those recommendations include strategies and action steps that help the support of that principle and that main theme. The image to the right is a, is a table that we gave to the city in the, in the draft plan that just highlights and lists every, every principle, theme, principle, and strategy. Each of these themes, each of these principles and strategies are broken up into a system-wide and park-specific recommendations. The highlights of those system-wide recommendations include a priority to maintenance, an introduction to public Wi-Fi, because the city is working with, is working with a regional partner such as PCs for People to set up public Wi-Fi and make that available to the residents in the park, especially Patterson Park, which is one of their most utilized parks in the city. A recommendation was to formalize partnerships and to improve access to parks. Next slide, please. As part of the recommendations, we, we set up implementation tables, system-wide, to help keep track of those recommendations. So what you're looking at now is like for connected, the connected implementation table, where we have the strategy, which is parks are safely and easily accessible, and then we have that strategy up under it, where we list the responsible parties and partners, we give an estimated cost, and then we left a space open for status, for date of completion, so that the city can keep track of their progress. Estimated costs are kind of roughly, they have a dollar amount behind them, where low is less than $100,000 and high is $500,000 or more for connected, because those are going to be more, more partnerships, more resources, and more financing that would have a higher cost versus the community implementation table, which is a more lower cost, because those are kind of, kind of strategies that the city can actually embark on now, and they're kind of short-term versus the connected, which is a long-term strategy. I'm going to turn it over to Laura to go through our system-wide checklist. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Nicole. The city wanted us to focus on six parks out of the seven to give park-specific recommendations. But before those detailed recommendations, we provided a checklist of improvements and actions that should be undertaken to bring the parks to a baseline. The checklist is to help the city be able to equally distribute resources and improvements throughout all the parks, which was something that the city mentioned was very important to them. Some of these actions or improvements include removing overgrown dead and fallen vegetation, removing outdated and unsalvageable park amenities, developing a maintenance and trash pickup schedule, enhancing park entrances, adding emergency call boxes and pedestrian scale lighting, and updating trash receptacles, considering adding dog-friendly amenities, as a lot of people mentioned, using the parks for walking their dogs in pets. Next, please. So this is a map of all the parks that park-specific recommendations are made for. These are Patterson Park, MLK Civic Center, Holly Park, Mann Avenue Park, Superior Hill Park, and Forest Hill Park. Today, we'll just be focusing on Holly Park and Mann Avenue Park. Both of these are neighborhood parks, and we wanted to highlight them because we think they have a lot of potential due to their location and the redevelopment options surrounding those parks. Next, please. So the first one is Holly Park. Holly Park is located along Euclid Avenue and is enclosed by three different neighborhood streets, North Taylor Road, Hastings Avenue, and Terrace Road. There are two entrances, although they're not as visible. There's a walkway from Terrace Road, and then, as you can see, labeled one is the entrance from Euclid Avenue, which is through a parking lot. Unfortunately, there's not a walkway through there. The park does have a number of amenities, such as the playset, a pavilion, some trash receptacles and seating areas, and also a basketball court. As you can see, they are at different levels of maintenance and quality. Next, please. So there are three different focuses for this park. That includes enhancing the visibility and access to and through the park. This includes, including, or developing new entrances using the publicly-owned vacant lots that are adjacent to the park that are labeled number four. Also, enhancing that entrance along Euclid Avenue, creating a walkway through there and decreasing the parking lot space to make it safely accessible for pedestrians and making it more visible from that street. Next would be improving the amenities that are already there, such as the playset was in great quality. However, the surface material could be updated to make it more safe and also more aesthetically pleasing, and also the basketball court, which could be transformed into a multi-use court and be resurfaced to include public art. Lastly, as we mentioned, there are a lot of redevelopment opportunities surrounding the park, such as the one along Euclid Avenue labeled number three. This is something we discussed with the city as something they could potentially consider in the future to include a use that complements the park and also that commercial district. For each of the parks, we included a map that visualizes these recommendations, and we also included an implementation table that they should, that would allow them to keep track of those improvements and also help them prioritize, using different timeframes, so labeling them whether they are able to be done at the short term, medium term, or long term, outlining what available funding there is, as a lot of it will probably take outside funding, and also the status of that improvement. A lot of these may take phasing and will require different partners. So this is for each park that have both of these things. Next, please. So the next one is Mann Avenue Park. This is, I believe, one of the smallest parks in East Cleveland. A lot of residents actually didn't recognize it as a park, so that's one of the most important things for this one. It is a park that's nestled within a neighborhood that borders Cleveland. It is very visible from the street. It has few amenities, has remnants of a baseball field and a couple picnic tables. And then surrounding the park, there are a lot of lots that have, where houses have been knocked down and have been primed for redevelopment, which is labeled number one. Next, please. So one of the things that we talked about that would be important for this park with the opportunity of all the vacant lots are adjacent to the park, would be to expand the park. And for example, there is a lot south of the park labeled number five, which currently has an industrial building that's been abandoned, that could be knocked down to increase the open space. Also, the vacant lots towards the back of the properties could also be used to expand it. Another important aspect would be improving the pedestrian amenities, such as introducing a walk, a walking trail throughout the park, going from north to south of the park that connects to Shaw Avenue, encouraging passive recreation, and also improving the sidewalk, which currently, right now, is a little bit disconnected. Also, replacing the amenities that are there and introducing new ones, such as a natural park and pavilion, so families can gather there, or it could help smaller gatherings. And then lastly, the, again, there's different opportunities to include more infill housing around the park. As the park is expanded, it's important to establish the boundaries of that park with fencing and trees to kind of create that buffer between the residential areas and the park, and also officiating that park. Next, please. Lastly, in terms of helping the city be able to implement these recommendations, we offer different resources, such as a list of potential partners at the local, state, and national level, funding strategies outside of their general fund, also identifying different funding sources, some of them coming from our own funding guidebook, and then additional resources that we found along the way that could help them implement it, such as other funding guides or even just how to implement different park recommendations. Next, please.
So the city is reviewing that final draft now, and once we get feedback, we're going to update that, that document and update the draft and present it to council for presentation this summer. I just wanted to say that, we wanted to say that, Lauren, we thoroughly enjoyed this, this getting an opportunity to go out into the community and learn more about East Cleveland and interact with the residents. So thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Nicole. This has been a project that's been ongoing for a while, and I would just say that's, this is another one of those examples of the team being very nimble and changing the way that they typically do things during COVID and being able to finish strong. So the document has been submitted to the city. We are waiting for their comment and feedback, and then this will most likely go, hopefully, to council for adoption sometime this summer, so. Any questions for the ladies here? Okay, all right. Thank you both. Oh, yes, Mayor Brennan.
Oh, I just wanted to say that it looks great and good work to everyone involved, and looking forward to hearing what the council has to say about it. These improvements are improvements that the residents of East Cleveland deserve.
Thank you. Yeah, it's one of those things, I think, Laura, Laura said it too, just that, you know, people didn't even recognize it as a park, so the, you know, the park space is there, but how do you activate it? And so I think it's a great, it's been a great process.
Mary, can I ask a brief question? It's Sunny. Just have the ladies, is there any, do you have any information about Neelah Park? I know that's not part of what you were doing, but that's sold, apparently. Do you have any information about that?
I can take it unless you guys want to jump in. I know that, that's, since it's a big site and it's been on, obviously, Team Neo's radar, they're working very closely with the city, as well as Jobs Ohio, on, you know, reimagining what that site can be and reactivating that. So it's not been part of our plan, and even with our land use strategy, we've kind of said that that's, you know, on someone else's. You know, they're working with them, with the city very closely on that.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to keep up with what's going to happen. Yeah, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay, well, no further questions. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Nicole. We will move on to our next presentation, and if I can, no, my enter button's not working anymore, so, okay. We have Susan, we have Susan Infield here today, Manager of Special Initiatives, here to give an update on Brook Park Road, the Street Safe Improvement Plan that was recently completed. And so this was a unique opportunity of working together with multiple communities on a project versus just one. So with that, I will turn it over to Susan.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, so as Mary had mentioned, the appeal of this project when it came to the 2020 competitive grant process that offered our professional planning services free to a community for a project. The appeal that we saw was that this did cross municipal boundaries. It was a commercial industrial corridor, the housing, too, an interesting mix of land uses. And we thought that perhaps it could be used as kind of a launching point for other similar types of corridors, maybe that didn't have all these land uses, but, you know, maybe a few of these land uses. But let me set the stage a little bit, in case people aren't wholly familiar with this corridor. Mayor Gallagher on our board, obviously, is very familiar with this corridor, because it is within her city boundaries. Brooklyn was one of the communities that was our project partner. But to just set the stage and to describe it, Brook Park Road is a key east-west commercial corridor within the cities of Brooklyn, Parma, and the old Brooklyn neighborhood of Cleveland. If people have lived in Cleveland for a long time, and remember when 480 was not finished from the east side to the airport, you used to have to actually exit 480, and Brook Park Road is what you would take to get to the airport, so that's just a little bit of history. But this corridor, it measured four and a half miles in length. The far west end of the corridor was Chevrolet Boulevard, where there's a Chevy metal plant, and then the east end of the corridor was West 10th Street. The corridor has several big box retail chains, such as Sam's Club, Walmart, Best Buy, and Menards. That Menards is the only Menards in the Cleveland area. The next nearest one is in Stowe, I believe. The corridor has a strong auto sales presence, new car, truck, motorcycle dealerships, used car dealerships, several of those, body shops, auto parts stores, so heavy automotive presence on that corridor. However, the north entrance to the Metro Parks Big Creek Reservation is also on this corridor, and the corridor has some unique shopping destination businesses, such as BA Sweeties, which is advertised as the biggest candy store in America. Sidewalks line both sides of the corridor, and there are a variety of housing types on Brook Park Road, a few single-family homes in the center of the study area, a pretty large manufactured home development, which most people would consider trailer homes in the old Brooklyn neighborhood on the east side of the corridor, and multiple apartment complexes that run along the Metro Park and the Big Creek Parkway. There's also just outside of the corridor study area, next to the border of Brooklyn on the west side in the City of Cleveland, another manufactured home development. So a lot of people live on the corridor, and a lot of people travel there to work. This corridor has direct access to I-480, to the Jennings Freeway, and it's served by three RTA bus routes. It's 11 minutes from the Red Line Rapid Station in Brook Park, 10 minutes from the airport, and 10 minutes to downtown. I know that 10 minutes downtown might change during rush hour a little bit, but the things that this commercial corridor has going for it are amazing. There's also a CSX rail line budding the corridor with the depot at the Chevy plant that, you know, they load the trains up with some of the finish. they load the, the trains up with some of the finished parts. That depot is at the Chevy plant at Chevrolet Boulevard. There's 10 major intersections on the corridor and a portion of the intersection in its center lies within a FEMA floodplain. So there is some flooding. The corridor serves an immediate area population of 125,000 people. And educational institutions very close to the corridor are the Polaris Career Center, the Tri-C West Campus in Parma and Baldwin Wallace University. So altogether, this corridor is well positioned for continued growth and a prosperous future. So next slide, please. So you might say with all that going for it, why did the communities come to us for planning services? Well, they were interested and again, the communities are Brooklyn, Parma and the old Brooklyn neighborhood of Cleveland. They were interested in beautification, storm water management to address periodic flooding, enhanced access to all those businesses, intersection improvements for safety and better traffic flow, and a marketing component to create a distinct sense of place. All of that was accomplished through our typical planning phases. And so this is going to look familiar, the phases that we went through to develop this plan because they're similar to what you heard in the East Cleveland presentation. We produced separate documents for a current conditions report, a vision for the corridor, what it could be in the future, and then the recommendations to achieve that vision, followed by how to implement those recommendations, how to get them to happen, how to pay for them, and then the production of the final plan. Next slide, please. So the current conditions, the first phase of the report, we interviewed stakeholders, whether they were local to that area, city officials, department heads, safety directors, you name it. Council people, we interviewed a lot of people. We talked to the sewer district because we were aware that given that there was a floodplain designated in this area that they were also focusing some attention on how to remediate some of the impacts of the flooding that periodically happens with heavy rainfall. We also talked to the metro parks because, hey, there's a metro parks right there. We wanted to know, you know, what their plans were vis a vis some of the other outstanding plans for this general area. So besides of those interviews and the interviews all took place either via Zoom teams or over the phone because this was a COVID project. Although the planning team was in the, the project area, we did not meet face to face because of COVID guidelines and yet we were still able to produce the plan. So we interviewed the stakeholders, we researched and reviewed other public data sources. We used O dot G cat data. We worked with the Parma engineer Jim Hellick to look at crash data in those 10 intersections to see, you know, how we could use that information to make recommendations for improvements. We looked at corridor studies in other areas of the United States because this is not uncommon for large cities to look at a commercial corridor and decide to dress it up or or change it a bit to encourage other businesses to come to that area. We looked at other public plans such as the Cuyahoga Greenways Plan, which is the, the on-road and off-road trails network for Cuyahoga County because there were actually a couple of trails mentioned in that plan that would connect people through all of those cities to the Big Creek Reservation. We reviewed selective environmental, economic and census data. We looked at land use and zoning currently in place to see where there were similarities and where there were differences. Again, looking towards making recommendations. We looked at property values and because of the periodic flooding, we looked at the, the total amount of impervious surface in the area. So on this slide, if you look on the top from left to right, the top left, we're talking about transportation systems and infrastructure, access to the corridor. So the highways and the bus routes and all of the graphics that you see come directly from the reports. And let me give a shout out to Rachel Novak for developing a lot of these graphics. In, in the middle on the top row, you see the top five industries that are represented on the corridor. There's a lot of employment on Brook Park Road. There's a, besides people coming there to shop, there's a lot of movement of people coming in to work. Also, some people are leaving to work elsewhere, but the volume of people coming in on a daily basis is tremendous and is very encouraging for all the businesses located there. Again, on the top row, the far right is a sample graphic of a crash analysis from one of those 10 intersections on the corridor. The bottom row on the left is a graphic showing the workers who are coming in to work at businesses on Brook Park Road and then also those who are leaving to go elsewhere. The middle graphic shows where those incoming workers are coming from. And interestingly, they're really coming from within a 10-mile radius, the vast majority of them, which is very encouraging in terms of employment numbers for that greater population in the immediate area of 125,000 people. There's a lot of work to be had on that corridor. The graphic, again, lower graphic on the far right shows stormwater impacts and issues from the Big Creek and Stickney Creek. And this is actually an elevation map of the corridor. Next slide, please. The second phase of the vision, we developed a vision statement that could be sort of the, the marching orders mainly for us as the planners moving forward to keep in mind what we wanted the recommendations to be for these communities. So we wanted to take advantage of all that Brook Park Road has to offer and continue it on a future path of growth with an attractive and thriving commercial business climate, offering a prime location for businesses. I mean, you cannot beat that highway location and the proximity to public transit in downtown. Also, the excellent employment opportunities offered there and unique shopping that they offer. So the, the upper left pie chart shows one of the questions that was on the business survey, asking businesses, you know, what they thought about deliveries from trucks. So the bottom graphic shows an outline of the study area. And throughout this visioning phase, we continued our interviews with those local and regional stakeholders. And we also developed a business survey that was distributed to businesses. During the vision phase, we developed three overarching themes for the plan and for the future development of the corridor. We talked about sustainable infrastructure, welcoming and safe environment and economic and business resiliency. And we also derived key principles that would eventually evolve into strategies that would support those themes and also achieve the recommendations that were going to be forthcoming for future development of Brook Park Road. Next slide, please. So the business survey, this is just a snippet from the survey report document that, that gives a little bit of feedback about some of the questions that were answered. But we had, again, it was a COVID project. So we had a Survey Monkey available to business owners. We had the assistance from the cities, from all of their economic development directors being, you know, very familiar with the businesses, talking directly to the businesses and encouraging them to take the survey and give feedback. So I thought you might be interested in hearing some of the questions that we asked. We asked the businesses if their business had been impacted by traffic congestion, had it been impacted at all by property maintenance or lack of from surrounding buildings or areas. We asked why they chose to locate their business on Brook Park Road and was it something to do with the proximity to the airport or the workforce or land availability? We asked them, you know, is there adequate space on your property for curbside pickup by customers? Because again, during COVID, we recognized, as did all of us, how the business environment changed rapidly for businesses. We also asked them if they would consider stormwater or beautification enhancements for their business such as landscaped islands. We asked for their opinion about various things, including potential modifications or improvements to the corridor such as more stoplights. Big thumbs down on that, no surprise. Or less stoplights. More people were in favor of that. We talked about reducing lanes. And we asked a lot of questions. And as I said, this, it just represents, you know, just a, a smattering of responses that we quantified for the communities. Next slide, please. So the recommendation phase, this was the, obviously the meat of the document and, and, you know, very enjoyable to work on because we had so much information that we had gathered from the current conditions from all those interviews that we had done and the vision that everybody had collectively for what Brook Park Road could look like moving forward. So we use the recommendations to articulate specific actions that will achieve the vision and address any issues and opportunities that arise. So on the top half of this graphic, and again, these graphics are all from the document, moving from left to right, the left demonstrates the theme of a welcoming and safe environment. And what you see here is streetscape beautification and a graphic of overlay zoning, how the street could look different in the future if there were bike lanes. Although throughout our planning, we recognized that if there were to be a bike lane anywhere in this area, it would be on parallel streets just south of this area in Parma. If you move over to the right, again, continuing with that same theme of a welcoming and safe environment, we've got a graphic of integrated wayfinding and signage, a way to make the whole corridor a little more cohesive by using uniform signage and maps. Because there are people who live in the area, not everybody's driving there, some people are walking. And there's a lot of fun, unique things in this general area. You know, there's obviously the zoo, there's another metro park not too far, the West Creek, Creek Reservation. But there's really some unique stores and museums in the area, things that could be highlighted on a map and entice people to stay and spend a little bit more time. And anybody who's gone to Sweeties knows that there is mini golf there. So talk about a way to keep people on your corridor spending money. I mean, there's, there's so many unique things about this corridor. So in the bottom half of the graphic, again, moving left to right with the theme of sustainable infrastructure and technology integration, that graphic is showing the Internet of Things, which is connecting and exchanging data over wired and wireless networks. And this is really the wave of the future. When you think of driverless vehicles, not even, you know, necessarily battery operated vehicles, but driverless and how information is going to be exchanged from one wireless connection to another. So just something for the communities to think, to think about as opportunities arise in the future and also funding. Moving to the middle on the bottom, that theme is, that graph is, is an example demonstrating the theme of economic and business resiliency and shows an example of a retail trend and projection for the future. This is actually a photo of a Walgreens prototype store in Maple Heights that replaced a full-service Walgreens with something that's very, very small. And, you know, in our research and looking at trends for the future, we wanted to make the communities aware of, of what to look for. You know, again, as opportunities and funding present themselves. The graphic on the lower right demonstrates the theme of sustainable infrastructure and this is an example of bio swell showing stormwater management. Next slide, please.
And Susan, just before you start, we'll have to go pretty quickly through this looking at the time.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Okay. Speed it up. Thank you. So the implementation phase basically shows how the, how to achieve all the goals that were recommended throughout the document. Next slide, please. We also, you know, provided just a little bit of information on best practices. Cleveland Heights actually did some of the things that we highlighted here. So if anybody were to go to Cleveland Heights website to see what they did with their master plan, they'll see that they have assigned people to particular projects, they have regular report outs and they include them in the community's annual report. Something for, for everybody to think of as you're, you know, publishing those documents. Next slide, please. So the implementation matrix again is showing the, those themes that were identified in the vision, how they're carried over to the recommendations and now to the implementation. Next slide, please. And the implementation, we, we put in a different table here, a little bit different than some of our other plans. Things for the communities to consider as they begin to implement specific action steps. There were things that we were aware of in our research, such as if you're going to put in a, a, a street bicycle lane, talk to the Cleveland City planners. There's a lot of expertise about doing that type of thing. So it's a table filled with that kind of information in case the communities weren't aware of it. We wanted to give them some shortcuts to action. Next slide, please. Funding and resources, this is, everybody should have received in the past, around the end of the year, the, our, our agency's funding and resources guidebook, which is actually written specific to a municipality's operations, telling them how to find funding and what resources are available to help them get things done. And so we actually tied particular funding resources to particular actions in this plan. Next slide, please. And that's it for the presentation. Again, wanted to let you know that this was a combined effort with Micah Stryker, Rachel Novak and me. And thank you for listening and I'll let you get on to the next presentation. Thanks.
Thanks, Susan. Mayor Gallagher, I don't know if you wanted to say anything about it. I don't want to put you on the spot, but you know, it was a really great working relationship with the cities and the, and the administration and their staff. So thank you for the time you've committed, you committed to the project as well.
No, I just want to say they did a great job. I think it will help all three of us. We've talked afterwards, write a letter to some of the bigger agencies and, and give them as a guide using, as everyone knows, who has a master plan, it's very helpful for funding opportunities in the future. And that's what all of our cities need.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Well, we've got a couple more things. I know we're getting close on time. I already have warned Jim, he's going to have to go through this pretty quickly, but someone did ask about sending out the slides and we will send out this deck after the meeting today. So you'll have access to all this information. So with that, we are going to write a brief update on the Lakefront Public Access Plan. So I will turn it over to Jim Sonhalter, Planning Manager of Design and Implementation.
Thank you very much, Mary, and good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Happy to provide this update on the Lakefront Public Access Plan with a focus on focus areas. The overall plan is complete and we're now aggressively pursuing the planning, design and engineering and of course, funding for defined focus areas along the shoreline. It's been a very busy week. We had our consultant team of Smith Group in town. So Monday, we met with the Regional Sewer District, we met with private property owners and, and Villa Beach Association for the Euclid Beach Connector. Can, had more meetings on that project on Tuesday and have engaged Councilman Polencik from the City of Cleveland and the Cleveland City Planning Commission staff to bring them up to speed. One new project that's going to have an influence on this is the Western Reserve Land Conservancy Euclid Beach Neighborhood Plan. We're on the steering committee, so we're going to be overlapping quite a bit on this. We've met with Cleveland Metro Parks, other private property owners and the Beale Park Neighbors Group. Not to leave them out, we also had a meeting with the Lakefront Property Owners in Lakewood's Gold Coast. We had about 30 people, property managers, property owners, tenant associations, HOAs represented and Lakewood City staff. So we can present our latest findings on that. So that was this week. In a couple of weeks, we have been invited to the City Parks Alliance. I'll be a speaker at the Greater and Greener Conference in Philadelphia, where we'll be talking specifically about our Lakefront Public Access Plan as well as, and I'll be speaking with Allison Lucasy Love for her work on the Euclid Waterfront Improvement Plan. Next slide, please, Mary. So as again, we are moving aggressively, but we're carrying through on our main goals from the plan. Integrate with ongoing initiatives. You know, we've got the Euclid Master Plan, the Rocky River Master Plan, Cleveland Metro Parks Cheers Project, everything that's happening in the city of Cleveland and as well as Cuyahoga Greenways. So not redoing plans, just using the best parts of all the plans to come up with this vision and implement it. We're expanding public access. It's all about equity and access. There are a lot of folks in the, in the county who do not have direct access to the lake. Over 90% is under private ownership. Over ninety percent is under private ownership. So we're looking to increase access to existing public ass- assets and by creating new pathways. Uh, we're protecting shorelines. There's real impacts, um, on real property values, uh, with ongoing shore, uh, shoreline erosion. And everything we do, it's can't have an adverse impact on water quality. So we're going to be enhancing that water quality, creating habitat and sustaining ecology. Next slide, please, Mary. We've had lots of meetings, you're well aware of that, so we can just go to the next slide. We continue to have meetings. This is a quick snapshot. This is just the public, uh, response that we've gotten, um, through the, um, Lakefront, uh, Public Access Plan itself. These numbers are going to be duplicated many times over, I think, with the focus area planning, uh, that's underway. Next slide, please. So again, it's all about public access. We're increasing that by fifty, uh, fifty percent overall and three hundred percent increase of public access outside of downtown Cleveland. We've got projects that will total over eight miles of newly publicly accessible shoreline and really impacting a lot of people within a ten-minute walk. That number's come up a lot in presentations today, but on the way to forty-seven thousand people within ten-minute walk of public, um, access. Hundred eighty, hundred ninety percent increase of minority population, um, and hundred ninety-nine percent increase in LMI households. Next slide, please. We have developed four focus areas through our planning process. And again, this is not, um, this is a countywide vision, but it really comes down to where this access, where these improvements are warranted and where they're wanted. Um, with ninety percent of the shoreline under pu- private ownership, there are a lot of property owners that don't want the public anywhere near their, their shoreline. So it depends on community receptivity. Um, we went through a very stringent process of valuation criteria, um, that ranked the public receptivity as well as shoreline conditions, and that's how focus areas were developed. Um, you'll see there are four on this slide, um, that not only have, well, they've, they were introduced in prior planning efforts, like Lift, Lake Clifton Bridge, um, in the East Ninth, the East Fifty-Fifth Street Connector, those were both TLCI projects, but they're being elevated and amplified through the lakefront planning process. And today I'm going to talk specifically about Lakewood's Gold Coast and what we're calling Euclid Beach Connector. Next slide, please, Mary. Okay, Lakewood's Gold Coast. Thirteen high-rise buildings, condominiums, apartments, um, two hundred and twenty-five million dollars in real property value, point seven miles of shoreline access, um, and there is pretty serious erosion issues, um, affecting this, these properties. Um, we've done a survey, um, bathymetric underwater topography. We've done land topography and upland conditions, uh, that was completed in January this year. Um, we're going to be completing the, the, um, master plan here shortly. You can see, you're advancing for me, thank you. Let's talk, let's land a quick look at these shoreline conditions, Mary. You can see all these buildings. Big difference between the west side and the east side projects is about thirty additional feet in elevation of these shale bluffs. Next slide, please. And you can go to the next one and you'll be seeing all these, uh, up close and personal when we send this to you. But there's major impact, major threats to existing real property improvements. Um, we've got this, um, facilities like swimming pools, uh, mechanical boilers, um, within, well, summer, uh, is closest within fifteen feet of the edge of the cliff. Next slide, please. And we've also got infrastructure, we've got outfalls coming in to talk about water quality improvements that will be part of this. Next slide, please. And this is a process, and I'm glad we're sending you the, the, the slide deck because it's a lot to go through. But this is all about initial survey through construction. Um, next slide, please, and I can talk about this because we're doing this for both, both of these. So this is what's underway. We're collecting background data. Uh, we'll be wrapping that up within a month. Well, we're undergoing a, um, we've beginning the preliminary engineering process for the Gold Coast. Um, that takes eight to ten months. Permits are the big thing, at twelve to fourteen months once we submit. But as soon as we get to thirty percent design drawings, we will be applying for permits. Um, final design and engineering, that's on its own timeline in construction. But overall, um, from today, it's a process that'll take twenty-four to thirty-one months until we get this thing built. Next slide, please. We are bringing in lots of money. You'll see, well, maybe I didn't, uh, maybe I glossed over it in the, the initial slide, but this is estimated to be about a thirty to thirty-five million dollar project, given the topography and conditions around. So the county is in, we have received a coastal, uh, mention of assistance grant from ODNR. We've got funding from FEMA. So right now of that amount, we've got one point two million dollars committed. Next slide, please. Okay, let's talk about Euclid Beach. I know time is of the essence here. So this is over, this is a project that goes east and west of East One Fifty-Sixth Street. We, this is another project that we started very early on in the planning process. So, uh, this is about an eleven million dollar project that will, um, connect, basically start at the Euclid Beach Pier and continue west, uh, to the Shore Acres Club. Next slide, please. And here we are. So you see to the east on the right side here is Euclid, uh, the Euclid Lakefront Reservation, you can see the pier. This is going across a number of private properties, Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District properties, um, and three beach clubs and two other private owners. So there's a lot of coordination and this is why we're having a lot of meetings. Next slide, please. Uh, we can see some of the conditions here, so erosion is really bad. The bluffs are not as high, but they are definitely falling into the lake. In the Beulah Park area itself, um, that middle image at the bottom there, that is the, where you see the edge of the cliff, that is a property line. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. There we go. More conditions, and this is heading west toward Villa Beach. Next slide. And you can keep going. You, the big difference here between this, this project and the other project is we, well, I guess they both do. There's a lot of unpermitted, unregulated fill, a lot of sidewalk, chunks of sidewalks that have ended up, uh, in the water in an effort to protect from erosion, it doesn't work. Um, next slide, please. Okay, this is the process. You can see we're collecting background data, exploring alternatives, going through preliminary design and engineering, final design and engineering and bidding up through construction. Next slide. Beulah Park is going to take about nineteen to thirty-six months to get through all of these, uh, all of these phases plus permitting and to through to construction. But here you can see how we're kind of allocating the dollars we've gotten. Um, next slide, please. Here we go. Um, this is kind of divided into three separate chunks. We've got a total project, uh, cost of about eleven million dollars. We've been successful in raising six point nine million of that so far. We have other partners, uh, whom we're talking to about submitting a formal, um, request for funding to assist us. So County Public Works has been, uh, funding the planning effort here. We were successful in getting two point from it, two point four million dollars from FEMA to handle these two, um, focus areas as well as, uh, two others. Um, we're going to divide the money between them for preliminary engineering. We've gotten a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Nature Works, an ODNR, uh, program. Uh, we've gotten money from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, that's about one to one point seven million. We'd rather be toward the point seven part of it, uh, as well as a million dollars from the Erosion Emergency Assistance Grant. And you can see that how this is divided into thirds, and this is basically where the money's going for now. Um, where you see a dashed box, this is west of the Regional Sewer District property. And we are covered with preliminary engineering. We are still raising funds to get through construction for that. And you can see some of the funds we're looking at. We can draw a line through state capital. We would, did not get any allocation for that this year. Next slide, please. Next steps with, uh, Euclid Beach, uh, we do have Smith Group under contract now for final design and engineering. Um, we need to execute the agreements with FEMA and the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Through all these surveys, we need to get ODNR's approval of the natural shoreline. There's, I don't have enough time to explain that part of it with you, but it's basically where that final line is going to be in the water. And that determines where we can build things. But to build things, we also need that line to show us where we can negotiate easements with Regional Sewer District and private property owners. And then we also need to, um, uh, apply for submerged land leases with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, and that'll be part of the permitting process. Smith Group will be back in town for more meetings on both projects in the next four to six weeks. They brought back a lot of data. We had some really great conversations with a lot of folks. Um, so the real planning and design work is underway. Um, Gold Coast Public Works issued a request for qualifications for preliminary engineering, and this is for the FEMA dollars. Um, the statements qualifications are due next Monday. At the end of June, we'll be selecting a consultant and anticipating county council approval in September. And it's with the additional focus areas that we can cover through the FEMA dollars, um, we're on a similar timeline, although, um, it's a, a week or so or a day or so displaced, but still hoping to get everything underway in September. So that concludes my report, I think. Is there another slide, Mary?
I think that's it.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim. I'm sorry. We knew this was going to be really pushing the envelope with all these updates, but again, just so much activity and, uh, we always want to make sure our board is in the know before things hit the paper and that things are out being discussed by other people. So, uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry Mike's not here today, but you know, we've been working extremely close, as you know, with, uh, his team at Public Works and especially now as it moves into design and engineering, really trying to help keep it cohesive with the outreach to communities and assist as we can along the way. So, uh, I know we're, you know, at time, we just got a one more, uh, update and then I will go through my report extremely quickly. And then just a reminder will be the Solid Waste Policy Committee will be meeting immediately following, uh, this meeting. So I will go ahead and turn it over to Patrick. This should be fairly quick. Um, more of an FYI than a request for approval, but, uh, Patrick is our Planning Manager of Strategy and Development, and I will turn it over to you, Patrick.
Thank you, Mary. I'm going to give a brief update about Single Family Zoning Phase Two. You can go to the next slide. If you remember, Single Family Zoning is a partnership with County Planning and the, uh, First Suburbs Consortium. During Phase One, our goal was to identify issues within zoning regulations, uh, that could make infill housing difficult to construct. That phase has been completed. We are now in Phase Two, where we'll be using the information from Phase One to outline best practices for improving zoning, uh, updating codified ordinances and tracking infill housing. Next slide, please. We did have some, uh, uh, print and news articles that were, uh, published related to Phase One in freshwater Cleveland and Crane's Cleveland Business. Uh, so we are excited about the press that we've been getting as we head into Phase Two. Next slide. In Phase Two, there are five steps that we'll be going through. Uh, these are happening concurrently. Uh, we are building a resource guide on the importance of infill housing and talking about, uh, education for folks. Uh, the second part is a code update options. Uh, so we want to talk about suggested code changes and model codes. Uh, I'll be coming back to that in a second. We'll be doing a design guidelines, guidebook to talk about, uh, how communities can set up design guidelines for infill housing. We'll be talking about infill housing incentives and different options for that and tracking infill housing. Specifically for that second part, the code update options and best practices, we are going to be doing a pilot program in which we'll be selecting communities to update their codes. Next slide, please. That pilot program is really, uh, why we're giving an update today. We are selecting up to two interested communities to participate in a code review and text edit for their single-family district. Uh, these communities are expected to actively participate in meetings. Uh, we're asking them to provide data that includes variances, approvals and other records and to coordinate necessary meetings with city staff. As a result of that effort, they'll be getting updated code text and assistance in the education and approval process for their infill housing, uh, and their code updates. Next slide, please. That pilot program is open to members of the First Suburbs. Uh, the program was advertised to those communities beginning in May. The final deadline is tomorrow, June tenth. At this point, six communities have expressed interest in that pilot program. A random drawing will be held on June fourteenth, that's Tuesday via Zoom. The importance of bringing this to the board, we will be entering into contracts with, uh, County Planning, the First Suburbs and the selected communities. Each of those contracts, uh, will be at a cost of twenty-five hundred dollars to the community. So that would be twenty-five hundred dollars in revenue for County Planning, uh, for a total of five thousand between the two separate contracts. We will pro- be providing an additional twenty-five hundred to each community in kind to be able to complete, uh, the updates to their code. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Patrick. Very efficient. Thank you. Uh, any questions for Patrick? Yeah, again, um, our bylaws require that anything, contracts of five thousand dollars or more come for board approval. But, uh, obviously this will be two separate contracts that, um, together will equal five thousand. So we wanted to make sure you were aware of that, not that we need, we not requesting your approval today, but wanted to make sure you're aware that this is going to be, uh, taking place. Any questions for Patrick? Okay, well, we will move right along. I, uh, I feel like I do this to myself every time. I'm like, quick fly through my director's report, so. Um, the good thing is I have good news today. I felt like my last report was a little doom and gloom and, um, we have made, you know, a lot of progress on a lot of our projects. So I will go through a few points very quickly. Uh, these are a few types, topics that I want to cover today. In terms of our job postings, we did post a senior planner position and a planner position. And, uh, I think initially when I reported to you at our last meeting, we were low in the, uh, applicants, but we did, uh, bump those up and we had a great pool of candidates, uh, especially in the planner series. Unfortunately, we only had, uh, two senior planners that applied that met all of the qual- the requirements. And so, uh, we've decided that we're going to push that position, um, to twenty-three, uh, in hopes of posting it again next year and having a larger pool to choose from. But, um, I do have good news to share. We, um, made an offer yesterday to our current intern, Paul Triolo, and, uh, he has graciously accepted an offer of full-time position with us. So we are very excited and, uh, want to welcome Paul officially as a full-time planner. He recently graduated from Cleveland State, uh, with his masters. And so Paul is on, uh, on today, if anybody would like to say congratulations, but we're, we're excited to have you. He's done some tremendous work, um, you know, he's been here as an intern and we're happy to bring Cleveland State back in the fold. So congratulations and, uh, welcome to Paul. Um, in addition, we made an offer this morning to another planner candidate and it was immediately accepted. So we're very excited to say, um, in the past two days, we made two offers and had two people accept. So really excited, uh, looking at a start date. Obviously Paul will just transition into full-time, um, staff versus intern. And then the second planner position will start, uh, in approximately two weeks. Um, looking at our budget, we did have, excuse me, another candidate that would have been, uh, a great full-time hire. But looking at our budget, we've decided that we are going to offer a full-time internship versus a full-time employment. That will be a savings to us in terms of our benefits and, um, that come along with full-time employment. So we're hopeful that they will accept that offer. Um, if not, we will, uh, proceed with two and look at potentially another, uh, op- option to make sure we're getting all our work done. So having said that, fiscally, uh, we're on track with expenses and revenues after Q1. Q2 looks, um, to be following along the same lines. We did want to share some recent county council approvals this week. We received full appropriation of the nine hundred and fifty thousand for the Healthy Urban Tree Canopy Program, um, for fiscal year twenty-two, that's program year three. Uh, and those dollars we moved out of our operating budget. So if you remember from last year and earlier discussions, that money went in, uh, was sitting in our operating, um, budget. And as you know, these, these grants and these reimbursements go over several years. And so with no rollovers last year, that money, um, was lost and we had to go back and request that funding be added back to our budget. So in this structure, it will, we will not have to go through that again, um, next year. So we're very thankful to council and OBEV and fiscal for helping us get through that. Uh, in addition, we received spending authority on twenty-eight thousand dollars in revenues that we received in Q1. Uh, this will be very helpful as we look at increased staff, um, expenses that we will be able to utilize those dollars to cover some of our costs. Um, and so having said all of that, with the twenty-two planning grants, we remember at our last meeting, I talked about reevaluating in the summer. Um, and we're really at a place now where we've got a few projects that are ready to, um, be wrapped up, um, well on our way this summer. And so we will have, the increased capacity will allow us to provide more assistance to, to communities. So, uh, what we've talked about doing is developing a survey and, uh, sending that out to the planning directors in Cuyahoga County to solicit their feedback, to try and identify what the greatest needs are and see how we best could help communities, um, to maybe have some prescribed options for, um, soliciting proposals versus just something wide open. So I think that would help us too in looking at the capacity we have and. So I think that would help us too in looking at the capacity we have and what we can assist on. So that is, we're taking a look at that now and hopefully get something out in the next couple of months. So excited to say that because I was really worried that we wouldn't, you know, go another year without doing that. But I think we're in a really good position, given our increased capacity at this point. In terms of Greenways, I know many of you have participated in conversations with Elaine and others, and I just want to thank you for your commitment to having these conversations. The engagement has been, you know, tremendous. And, you know, there's a lot of momentum happening with the trails and discussions on those critical gaps. So we've continued outreach with the state-elected leaders, and there's a plan to be a tour in August. And what we're asking, especially you, Councilwoman Conwell and Councilwoman Simon, is that we feel like it would be very appropriate to bring this in front of county council to provide some updates and strategies and discussions that have happened so that we can ask county council to participate in those sessions as well. I know that Councilwoman Baker recently participated in a session, and we want to make sure that you're engaged and that you are aware of all the work being done. So I will follow up with you after and try and determine how best to get in front of county council and what that timing might look like. So if I could enlist your help on that, that would be terrific. And finally, we are in the process right now of going through annual reviews. This is something that was originally, you know, was previously taking place on an annual basis. This year, we instituted it using a new tool, which then, which also creates an opportunity to solicit feedback from internal and external people that are working with our team versus just supervisors' input. So this is something that I experienced at Team Neo and thought it was a very useful way to get additional input on, from people who work with our, with our staff regularly. So I thank you to anyone and all of you who did participate in that survey and provide some feedback. We are expecting completion of all of the documentation and internal discussions by the end of June. We did have budgeted for merit raises in our biannual budget. So this is something that is already built into our, our budget. So we will not require any additional funding to institute merit raises for the staff. So any questions on that? With that, I am done with my report. I feel like there's so much more I could share, but I'm really excited about the work this team is doing, and I just can't say enough about how proud I am of the work that's being generated out of this office. So.
Thanks. Okay, Mary, yeah, thank you so much, and congratulations to the new hires. And we appreciate all this work and the updates. And county council will be happy to entertain the Greenway presentation and go forward with that. So I don't think there's anything else on the agenda. If that's the case, I can move with a motion to adjourn. Into the next phase of today's meeting would be solid waste report.
Okay, so we can just confirm if there's any old business?
Sorry.
That's okay. Any new business? All right, hearing none? Go ahead, Sonny.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're gonna move now into the solid waste policy meeting. And we're adjourned from solid, I mean, from planning and can have, I guess Beth, if she's on, open up this next meeting.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your time commitment today. I really appreciate it.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Thank you. With that, we'll turn it over to Beth.
Thank you.
Yes. And I will stop sharing. Do you want me to share anything?
No. Okay, we're good. I'll be real brief because I know we, we have limited time here. Good afternoon, all. And I guess I will ask Annette to please do roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Boebens?
Mayor Boebens, yeah. Sorry, my screen changed. Present.
Mayor Brennan?
Here.
Councilperson Conwell?
This is Jo Nani. She had to step out to another meeting, so I'm her alternate, so I'm here.
Thank you. Mayor DeSico? Mayor Gallagher?
Here.
Mayor Orkut?
Here.
Mayor Prosek? Mayor Sellers? Councilperson Simon?
Here.
Ms. Wellhelm? Mr. Mathias? There are six. I believe that's still a quorum.
And it looks like Mayor Prosek is still on, but I'm not sure if he's able to.
It does look like he's still on.
I was wondering. So we have seven.
Okay, we'll take that. Thank you. And I too would just like to provide you some updates as to the activities the district has been conducting the first of this year. Just some brief announcements. I guess it's a good thing that with the warm weather, we've had some opportunities to do some outreach and education in person, which has been lovely. We did an event at the zoo and Rocky River, as well as Homestead Falls for Earth Day in person, which was wonderful. And we are also continuing our online education, both for the ambassador program as well as our business program. But we are embracing any in-person opportunities that we have come before us. 'Tis the season for composting bin and pail sales. So if you are interested, we have them available here at the district in Garfield Heights. We conducted just this past Saturday, our very first small propane amnesty day. We did notice last year, as folks were embracing being outdoors due to the COVID pandemic, that folks were doing a lot of camping. And with that came a lot of spent small propane tanks. Although we happen to be a leader in the state for producing them, we, there isn't a very good infrastructure for recycling them here locally. So we did find a recycler that's more towards, believe it or not, the West Coast. And we held our first event. Unfortunately, or fortunately, it coincided with probably one of the most lovely weekends we've had in quite some time. So we only collected 27 small propane tanks. We are going to conduct the same pre-activity in the fall, trying to gauge, was it a combination of good weather? And possibly folks had already done something with those propane tanks at the end of the season last year. So I'll give you an update and to see how our second amnesty event in the fall will go. Along those same lines, we are opening our doors with a new program, which will begin in July, which is going to be called Second Saturdays. So what we hope to do on, and this first Second Saturday will occur on July the 9th, is we're going to actually have the facility open. And there will be limited hours. It'll be from 9:00 AM until noon. But it'll provide residents of the county an opportunity to bring us all of the specialty waste, not household hazardous waste. We still want that to funnel through the local collection avenue within each of the communities. But for, you know, CDs and DVDs, campaign signs, electronics, holiday lights, those types of things. We have all of those specialty wastes outlined on our website. And we'll be opening our doors again for the first time on Saturday, July the 9th. That will be a seasonal program. So we hope to do that from spring through October of each year. We also are happy to announce that we had been working with a local entrepreneur. His name is Jamie Arnold. You may have seen a recent article about him in Crane's. He operates a brand-new business called Repeat Glass. If any of you are familiar with Rust Belt Riders, it's a very Rust Belt Rider-esque type of program, where he will provide 96-gallon wheeled carts. Right now, he has them in partnership with different areas throughout Northeast Ohio, specifically, most are within Cuyahoga County. And it's for the sole purpose of collecting source-separated food and beverage glass. He currently has a relationship with Capglass in Pennsylvania for having those materials returned to Capglass for reprocessing into food and beverage containers. We are also working with Waste Management to provide him a second avenue for recycling. And I'll be touching on that in just a moment. Onto updates. Glad to say that we have successfully submitted our statutory annual district report to the EPA. It was due June 1st. This is a rather labor-intensive process. As such, we are supposed to survey every residential, commercial and industrial entity within our district. So we sent out a multitude of survey instruments. This year, we sent out over 380 surveys to commercial entities, along with a survey to each of our 59 communities. And we sent out 309 industrial surveys. We target those that we view as large generators. We want to make sure to capture their recycling and materials management activities to report to the state. That information is then all keyed into an electronic system through the Ohio EPA called Retrack, and our report is generated. I'm remiss in saying, we also sent out 87 surveys to entities that process our recyclables from here in Cuyahoga County. To let you know what our preliminary findings on the report have been, the report will not be final until this fall, when the EPA has done their full state reconciliation of all the disposal and recycling numbers. But the preliminary report is indicating that we, we as our most districts, still suffering just a bit from the effects of the pandemic. We have a 25% recycling goal for the residential commercial sector. We came in this year, it's looking like 24.4%. So we are down a little bit. We did notice in our survey efforts that many of those restaurants and bars are still, at least earlier in this, earlier last year, because this data is to reflect activities from 2021. We're not at full capacity as of yet. On the industrial side, we more than surpassed the goal. The goal there is 66%. We were able to calculate a reduction goal of 77.4%. That is down a bit from our 2019 percentage, which was a bit higher. And then, however, both of these, the industrial and the commercial, albeit they haven't returned to pre-pandemic levels, they most certainly are up from what we saw in 2020. So I wanted to let you know on that. And as soon as we get the finalized data from the Ohio EPA in the fall, we will definitely share that with you. Some new and exciting news is in February, we worked with Waste Management to submit a market development grant to the Ohio EPA. Waste Management was hoping that they might obtain $200,000 worth of grant funds from the state to basically help redevelop their oakwood material recovery facility. We got notice actually just a few weeks ago on May 19th that we were successful in obtaining those funds from the state. This is a wonderful redevelopment for the district and Northeast Ohio in general. This will increase our recycling capacity, not only within the district, but within Northeast Ohio. The redo of this facility will increase efficiencies by over 240%, if that is correct. Basically, the installation of the updated sorting equipment will allow them to increase sorting capacity from nine tons an hour upwards of 40 tons an hour. They will also increase their labor staff here in the district, which is nice. There is going to be an education center associated with the facility, which will be nice because assuming that we return to full-time education in person, we'll be able to take interested individuals, as well as children from the schools, into that facility, into a recycling facility within our district to demonstrate how to recycle right. So we're very excited about that. District annual grants, this is a process that we go through every year. This is, these are funds that we earmark in our budget to make available to local nonprofits, schools and our communities. Glad to be able to share that of our 59 communities, we did receive 39 applications. And we were able to fund over almost $175,000 worth of activities for our communities, which was very good. That was through our specific Community Recycling Awareness Grant. And that is primarily to, for the communities to, to conduct activities or produce outreach and education materials to increase the recycling right awareness within the community. We did award five recycling and composting equipment grants totaling just over 15,000 to those entities. And this year was our first year for our special project grants. And we set aside $50,000 that we were going to provide to as many communities as we received the applications to help those communities, you know, handle kind of larger-scale projects. We awarded to two this year. And that, that money is going to assist those two communities in the purchasing of larger pieces of equipment for them to better manage the recycling that they are doing themselves. Both of these communities are self-polluters. And so we're very happy to be able to help them buy some, some larger equipment to help them with their increased volumes of recyclables. Other programming that we've been up to, we were contacted by the Cleveland Department of Health, the Air Division, and asked to partner with them for a lawnmower exchange program. I actually did this program in a past life. And the idea is that the Air Quality Division provides $100 gift certificates to individuals that will take the time and have the initiative to turn in their gas-powered lawnmower to a scrapyard. Take that receipt, submit it back to the Health Department as proof of having retired that piece of equipment. And then that gift card can be used then towards the, you know, purchase of a, an electric or battery-operated lawnmower. So we ran that through the beginning of May, and it was a success. We had a limit, the Health Department had a limited budget, but we were able to give away all those cards. So we hopefully will be able to expand that program next year. Under technical assistance, which is something we do as the district, we have been very busy with community bids. We first helped Highland Heights and Mayfield Village. They chose to go out for a joint bid for curbside recycling and garbage collection services. We then helped Seven Hills. We're finalizing, that was finalized. We're underway with the Eastside Consortium. That is our largest bid that we deal with. That includes the cities of Beechwood, Cleveland Heights, Highland Hills, Independence, Lunters, Portland Hills, Pepperbike, Shaker Heights, Solon University Heights and Woodmere. And that is for aggregating disposal services and different varieties of recycling services. So that will actually be awarded in September. So we are underway with those activities. We will also be providing technical services for a couple of surveys. One is through the City of University Heights. The other will be with Rocky River. So we'll be working with those two communities to help them ascertain the willingness to maybe make some program changes within their communities for materials management collection. And finally, the, the last thing is we are doing some major overhauls to our website. We, due to some changes in the materials that Rumpkey is collecting, we found out earlier this year in February, that Rumpkey was expanding the materials that they are going to collect and process. They are pursuing polypropylene, which is, you know, we say not to use the numbers, but that is the number five. Those are those like yogurt tubs and cut cheese tubs, as well as a lot of single-use plastic cups. Rumpkey is also going to take single-use paper cups through their curbside programming. So in that, we need to look at the core materials that we represent for recycling right. And how can we best help all of the residents in our communities know, based on their current contract, whether it be for collection and/or processing or just processing, you know, what can they recycle? So we are actually redoing the web. So as a web user, you'll be able to get to that information, whether it's by the commodity or by the or by the community you live in. Or the most exciting part is we're going to have kind of a geo and intelligent location, locating base aspect to the web. So for example, if you happen to be, you know, in North Royalton, and you have some clothes that you want to drop off for reuse, you can put in your, you know, it can ping to your actual location, and it'll provide a list, for example, Planet Aid boxes, or Goodwills, or those types of places where you can, you know, drop off your used clothing for reuse based on your actual location. So very excited with that improvement to our website. And with that, I conclude my report. We have no resolutions this meeting.
Beth? We do have to accept the minutes from December 19th.
You are correct. I just zoomed right into my report.
No, that was fine. I knew we could get to it.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Um, who was that? Mayor Brennan?
Mayor Brennan.
You.
Yeah, yeah, I second your credit.
All right. Are we all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. I don't know why I'm doing that, but I'll. Yeah, you just jumped into the, the chair, the vice chair in the.
Okay, very good.
Like the pro, 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 pro temp. Way down there.
Well, and that concludes my report. As I said, we have no resolutions for this meeting. Is there any discussion that the committee would like to bring up? Okay.
Beth, I would just say thank you for all of your work and all of your energy and your staff assisting us with our communities.
Thank you.
Difficult decisions, and thank you, Mayor Brennan, for leading the way on the community survey so that we could take a look at that and see how it might work in our community. So very important, we're dealing with some of the same issues, so. Appreciate it very much.
Yeah.
I, I was going to say all the same things Mayor Boebes just said, she had not said them, so. And thank you, and, and we are back on track, I think, with regard to that. We had a little pickup with our council, getting their appointees to the committee, but they did take care of that earlier this week.
We are grateful.
We are on our way.
So. Really great work. Thank you.
Great. Well, I guess with that, we can conclude.
A motion to adjourn? Mayor Brennan? Mayor Boebes, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for sticking with us for longer than we had planned. I really appreciate your time. Not a good information, Mary. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.